Okay, good evening, everyone. Now I'm going to call to order the August 25th, 2020 regular town board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada? Absent. Councilwoman Jaquith?
Here.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yeah.
Councilman McPartlin?
Yeah.
Supervisor Syad?
Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to move on to approval of the minutes. First, we have the minutes of the July 28th, 2020 emergency special meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the July 28th, 2020 regular meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the July 30th, 2020 emergency special meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the August 13th, 2020 emergency special meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the August 19th, 2020 emergency special meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. And lastly, we have the minutes of the August 20th, 2020 emergency special meeting. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Without any changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have privilege of the floor. I have three letters that were asked to be written to the record for privilege of the floor. I'm going to begin with the first. This was submitted by Katie Chow of 109 Deanna Court. Katie writes, Dear Supervisor Syad and members of the town board, I disagree with Councilmember McGraw and her comments made in the recent Finance Committee meeting of August 11th regarding the investigation into Paul Sebastian. Mr. Sebastian was employed by our town for over 25 years, recently as the Director of Human Resources as well as the Comptroller. This meant that he was in charge of ensuring that hiring decisions and the treatment of town employees met standards of equality regardless of race and gender, sexual orientation, and other characteristics protected by law and demanded by our morals. In fact, it was part of Mr. Sebastian's job to address complaints of racism and discrimination. It was wrong when Mr. Sebastian posted the blackface picture in public and when he didn't take the photo down until asked to do so by a town employee who rightfully complained that the photo was degrading. It was also wrong when Mr. Sebastian took the photo down but didn't report the incident to the legal department. If the town supervisor or anyone who was then serving on the town board knew about the photo or knew about the employee complaint and didn't bring it to the attention of the legal department, that was also wrong. Councilmember McGraw dismissed the value of the investigation into Paul Sebastian as an investigation to, quote, "look into a photo of a Halloween costume," unquote. Unfortunately, that point of view centers Ms. McGraw as both a white person and as someone who holds the power of a public office that could determine the fate of any complaint of discrimination. Rather, we should be demanding transparency into the outcome of this investigation and welcome its conclusions even if they lead to uncomfortable truths. That concludes that privilege of the floor letter. Next privilege of the floor letter submitted by Judy Thomasman. I don't have an address for Judy. Judy writes, Good evening. I will admit that I am stymied by the mixed messages coming from our town board. I was excited to pick up the Gazette recently to read the article promoting Niskuna Town Board member Denise Murphy-McGraw is spearheading the Capital Region Anti-Racism Training Initiative. This is a fabulous national collaborative relying heavily on state and local champions across the country to promote local participation in the planned events such as the 21-Day Equity Challenge. I then watched the recent Town Finance Committee meeting where the same Denise Murphy-McGraw was decrying the independent investigation into the Niskuna blackface episode. Board Member McGraw continues to minimize and downplay this unpleasant incident. I'm not certain if she believes she is protecting her friend by rationalizing his behavior, but she and other members of the board have an obligation to do the right thing for the residents of Niskuna. We all agree that poor judgment was exercised by the employee who chose to dress in blackface and then post the picture to social media. I am dismayed that even poorer judgment is being exercised by those who were in the position to rectify this. One of my Niskuna high school teachers taught me, quote, "If you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem," unquote. For Member McGraw, please get off the fence and step up and be part of the solution for Niskuna. That concludes that privilege of the floor letter. Last privilege of the floor letter was submitted by Margaret Brennan of 854 Barton Place. Margaret writes, To Supervisor Syad and the town board, I've been participating in the anti-racism initiative that Councilwoman Murphy-McGraw is a leader in. It is a good and worthwhile effort. For that reason, when I listened to the finance meeting on August 11th, 2020, I was surprised by her comment about the blackface picture of Paul Sebastian, which is causing problems for our town as, quote, "just a Halloween costume," unquote. If it were 1920, I would understand her attempt to blow off this racially insulting costume, but it is 2020, and we are all more aware of the effect of racism on large segments of our population. The youth who attend our Niskuna schools have spoken out about racism in our schools. One of our sports teams was called out for racist behaviors in a game with Schenectady High School. I'm sure the councilwoman may want to put this behind us, but to be honest with you, the amount of money being spent on this investigation is small compared to the damage a statement such as the one she made at the meeting has had on the citizens of our town. And that concludes the last privilege of the floor letter. So with the conclusion of the privilege of the floor comments, we're going to move on to committee reports. We're going to begin with Councilwoman Jaquith.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, so we'll start with community programs. Summer programs have been successfully completed. We had five weeks of playground camp. Our final summer camp will be lacrosse camp, which is running August 26th to 28th. Summer concerts have also been very successful. We are extending the concert series due to its popularity. The final concert will be Sunday, August 30th at 4:00 p.m. The band playing is Band of Gold. The driving range will be open daily until Labor Day and then weekends only until it closes for the season on September 27th. Fall Fun Run, I previously reported that, you know, due to COVID, we were modifying this race to make it a virtual race. So registration is open online from August 1st to August 30th. You run a 5K. Between the dates of September 12th and 19th, you input your time, and the website will list all the participants and their times. The fee for this is $25, and all participants will receive a long-sleeve t-shirt as in prior years with respect to the senior center. Looks like we're averaging about 10 to 12 folks each program day for cards and socialization. And Tom's computer class has had a couple of visitors also. Coffee service is working out well. The seniors were entertained by a flutist today. And then the Bill Lawrence Trio will perform on Wednesday, September 9th at 6:00 p.m., and that's been moved to Town Hall. This is being sponsored by Blue Shield of Northeastern New York. Thank you to them. We also at the senior center, they've had two separate occasions where guest organizations have sponsored box lunches, one scheduled for September 1st, the other on September 18th. This is all, again, for free, and the September 1st date is already full. It's a good way for the folks at the senior center to start to transition the lunch program going forward. And then the staff is also preparing for indoor bocce, chair yoga, and tai chi as they require the least amount of exertion, et cetera. And again, our staff continues to approach us carefully and according to all protocols. I just want to take a moment to applaud our community programs and our senior center staff for their extraordinary efforts in service to our residents during this extraordinary time. Can't say it enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The farmer's market continues to be enjoyed by all. We're six weeks in, we have four more weeks to go. The last farmer's market will be on September 19th. Everyone continues to really enjoy the location, and the vendors are very happy as well. I wanted to report that I attended the Conservation Advisory Council meeting on August 5th to engage in a conversation that we started at the highway meeting regarding a biodiversity effort being spearheaded by residents. I just want to say we're really thankful to have such engaged residents willing to give of their time and talents in service to our community and our planet. Moving on to highway and parks, highway crews have been prepping for paving to commence on about 13 roads in the Hexham-West Home area. That's happening right now, and paving will commence soon thereafter. The prep work is going on. The town's portion of Lock 7 Road is closed and is being prepped for paving there in the second week of September when the New York State Canal Corporation completes their culvert replacement work. Landscaping on all the paved roads will happen once all the paving is complete. Crews also continue to work on longstanding drainage issues on Plum and Regent Street in an attempt to alleviate flooding there. There's a lot of work going on there, and fingers crossed that we'll have some success. Tree crews have been removing and trimming trees throughout town. Crews have also been patching potholes and doing basin repairs. Yardways pickup continues throughout town. And of course, regular mowing and maintenance continues on our over 500 acres of green spaces throughout town. Again, our highway and parks crews are doing a fantastic job keeping our roads and green spaces usable and enjoyable during this time. We're very thankful for their dedicated efforts. The next highway, parks, and recreation meeting will be September 2nd at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Councilwoman Delorada on the line?
He is, thank you.
Councilman, we will move on to you for your committee report.
Could you please, I can't go right now, but I will go in five minutes.
Sure.
If you have something else to go for, thank you.
Okay, not a problem. We're going to move on to Councilwoman McGraw.
I was planning on going anyway, so thank you, John. I was going to give you a report as well. I want to pick up where Rosemary left off in thanking the community program staff. I mean, they've had a magnificent summer, certainly when you account for the fact that we have been dealing with crisis after crisis here. They've just done a wonderful, wonderful job. Folks at the pool, just can't thank them enough for ensuring that we even had a pool season. We're in our last week and a half or so. I knock on wood, and I know Rosemary does every day, that it's been without incident. The training that they've received, their ability to ensure that people come in and are safe and leave are safe, they're there, and their time at the pool is safe. I know that folks were concerned and continue to be concerned that there were no daily passes this summer, but there were no daily passes this summer. I mean, that was, our community programs director, she really felt as though that was the only way to be able to ensure we could open the pool at all. She worked hand in glove with the aforementioned, very important, legal department, and they really worked very, very hard. Our deputy town council was over there almost every day, at least in the beginning of the summer, helping make signs and do everything that needed to happen. We just had no other way of monitoring who was actually in the pool and be able to do all the contact tracing that would have been needed if there was an incident at the pool, other than if we had the daily pass and everybody had, a season pass and everybody had the pass. I know I'm disappointed as well. Nobody worked so hard all year round to make sure that the pool is open, for it to only be open for a smaller population of folks. Everybody enjoys a busy, crowded pool, but that just wasn't possible this year with COVID. I am very hopeful that the things we learned from this year and the protocols that we've initiated, regardless of what the status of things are next summer, we'll be able to have a more robust crowd at the pool. Just going on to public works, a couple of things. I think folks see a lot of construction around town right now. There's been a tremendous amount of activity on the county level, which has then caused us to be doing some work, certainly with the water and sewer department. I will continue to sing the praises of our new roundabout, and I get very excited about these things, but the new roundabout at Route 7, excuse me, at River and Rosendale, which is such a tremendous feeder, over to Route 7, continues to get praise from everybody who goes through it. People who aren't roundabout fans really find that it's safer. It's alleviated so much traffic already. We know that there's concerns about a bike lane over there, but that's a conversation that's continuing. But because of that work, we decided to take on some additional work with Mohawk and our water and sewer lines over there. So that work is on Mohawk, the water replacement project, which is a significant project for us, is expected to be completed by October, and it was an accelerated timeframe because of the installation of the circle there, but it's been moving along quite quickly. Water and sewer crews continue to work to inspect and repair manholes and all these really exciting things, but manholes and valves and hydrants on the road and identify them for the highway crew who, as Rosemary was mentioning, are going through and trying to pave an inordinate amount of a number of roads in a very short period of time. We obviously had a condensed season this year, so they're doing a terrific job. I was so pleased to see the work on Lock 7 really get going in earnest today. So that's a project that I know a lot of people really care about. We're going to be appointing a few new employees at our water and sewer maintenance workers, and those are critical employees to our town. And we're continuing to do some maintenance at both our water and our sewer plants to ensure that things are moving along well in both of those areas. And that's all I have. I don't know if that was five minutes for John, but that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, if you're ready, we'll move on to you.
Yes, thank you. There is not an awful lot going on because the planning board is meeting by appointment only, but they certainly are meeting, and they're encouraging people that want to build to meet with them by appointment. We are still working on Kelch Farm, as we know. I don't know of any changes that have not been announced and that are different than what we decided on at our last meeting. I know there's been some concerns about that, but I think we're moving forward that in the way that we voted. Hopefully, we will continue going with our development on the riverside and the Mohawk River because that's an important piece of the Niskuna development package along with the rest of the development on the river. So I'm hoping that is going forward. I know it is, but it definitely has been slowed down by this pandemic. Thank you, Supervisor.
John, do you want to mention chickens?
Well, I understand that chickens aren't on the table, although we know that they're pecking around. I would love to have them on the table. I'm hoping that if they're, do we have a resolution on the board tonight with chickens? I don't think we do, but if we don't, we're going to get one very soon.
Well said. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Councilman McPartlin.
Thank you, Supervisor. Police and Public Safety Committee met on July 7th. Chief Wall and county attorney Briggs are working on the release of disciplinary records with the repeal of Civil Service Law 50A, so they continue to work on that, getting that information together. Fleet and equipment, we, the four new radar signs that we purchased have been delivered, so we should be deploying them relatively soon. We discussed the NCAP signs. This is a community project which we did in conjunction with NCAP. I want to thank Jean Sassenau for all her work on this, Councilwoman McGraw also, her committee helping with this. We have some signs in our parks which indicate no vaping, no tobacco, no drinking, no smoking, those sort of things. We did this in conjunction with grant from NCAP, so I want to thank everyone for helping with that. We discussed building-wise, the building lock system, which the Police and Public Safety Committee is recommending TBS as the vendor for that. Chief Wall also reports that she currently has enough PPE for her department and is expecting a wall thermometer to be installed in the police department. And citizen issues, we always discuss citizen issues. I want to reiterate for all those that are on the town email blast that please lock up your cars, lock up your garages. Seems like we're having another rash of that type of activity, of break-ins in the vehicles and garages in town, not just our town but other communities around our area. We had a rash of this in and around May. Arrests were made, but it appears that others are back doing the same thing. So please, lock up your cars, don't leave the keys in them, and lock up your garages, sheds, that sort of thing. We had also a resident request us to look into a three-way stop sign at Fernwood and Pine Haven, and we're studying the traffic results for there to see if there's any need for that. McGovern Drive, we also had some residents talking about speed issues. We put our monitors out there. We're going to be putting them out there again. We had them out there. Average speeds around 27 miles an hour, and we've had one incident in five years. But what we do when residents do send emails or bring these things to our attention, we send out one of our traffic cars, and we use increased patrols in those areas to discourage any kind of speeding or traffic violations. Community events, Chief Wall briefed the committee on possible protest activities and/or gatherings, not necessarily protests, but we've had gatherings for Black Lives Matter and other causes in our town. And when those sort of things are brought to the police department's attention, they have the necessary staffing, so we discussed that. Niskuna Farmer's Market, the police department with Chief Wall and other officers are also there for coffee with the cops, just be out there, talk to the residents, make them aware of what the police department doing, and then make the residents more comfortable with telling them what areas they think they need to concentrate on. Court, the only court issue, the court reopened, and they're working on two nights a week now. It's been very busy there, sort of getting through the backlog of citations and court issues, but it's been going, it's been going well. The fire department, they reported that they've been doing some active shooter training in conjunction with Schenectady County as well as our department. And our next meeting is September 1st at 8:00 a.m., and our committee also went into executive session to discuss public officer's law. But our next meeting, as I said, September 1st at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our committee reports. We're going to move on to the supervisor's report. So as you can see, if you're watching here on the live stream, we're continuing to meet virtually for all of our public meetings. We're going to do this for at least through the end of August and likely the beginning of September, so all of our committee meetings at the beginning of September are also going to be held remotely. We're cautiously anticipating that we'll have quasi-in-person meetings by mid-September. We're going to continue to wait any updates from the governor's office or any updated state guidelines that may include an extension of the waiver for the in-person meeting requirement for public meetings. So we'll wait to see if any updated guidelines transpire. And in the meantime, again, we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be holding in-person meetings mid-September, so we'll see what happens. Town Hall does continue to remain open to the public, but we're open by appointment only, so if you do have to do any business at the town, we ask that you contact department directly and schedule an appointment. When you do arrive to Town Hall, you'll continue to check in, and we'll continue to take your temperature and ensure that you are in a proper state to do business with our departments. We do ask, though, if you are able to, to continue to do business by mail, by phone, or by email. All of our departments have made accommodations to do virtually all of your town-related business online or by mail, so you don't have to come for a visit if you do not want to. You can do everything pretty much by mail or by email or by phone. So I encourage you to visit our websites, www.niskuna.org, so you can find any relevant forms online. Also, school tax bills are going to be mailed very soon, and that collection will begin. So to protect the public safety as well as the safety of our employees, we're going to be accepting payments by mail or the Town Hall Dropbox only, so we're not going to be doing in-person payments for school tax. So again, you can mail your payments, or you can drop them off at the Town Hall entrance at the Dropbox, and receipts of your payment will be mailed to you by the receiver of taxes. Okay, as I previously stated, budget season has begun. The tentative budget, again, is going to be due September 30th, and that officially kicks off all of the budgets to follow, which will be the preliminary and then the final budget in November. All the budget estimates have been received thus far from our department heads, and we're going to be beginning our internal budget rounding meetings as soon as next week. And with regards to the budget, I do want to thank my fellow board members for their support in allowing our town to utilize ClearGov budgeting software. This will streamline the budget process and make it much more transparent to the public. So again, I sincerely and truly thank our town board members for their support in that. And lastly, we do have a couple of new appointments tonight, one of which will be the position of comptroller. Very excited to appoint a new individual, but I would be remiss to say that I didn't thank Janet Nguyen, who assumed the comptroller's position for the past few months. She stepped up to the plate in a very big way, and we will always be grateful for her hard work and support that she's shown over the last few months. So thank you, Janet. That concludes my supervisor's report. We're going to move on to our resolutions. We're going to begin with old business, and that is Resolution 2020-J-203. Supervisor McPartlin, hold up her please read.
A resolution enacting a local law to Amendment 55 of the Code of the Town in Niskuna entitled "Alarm Systems Emergency."
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? We say none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilman Delorada?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jaquith?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Miss, our resolution passes. There's a knocking in the background.
I know. I'm sorry. I'm at camp, and my neighbor is doing a project upstairs. David just went upstairs to ask him to stop for about, I think we can get through this in a half hour, right?
All right, that works.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering what it was.
No, it's.
Move on to our evening with the Resolution 2020-208, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to continue to express concern about the cost of the legal services. It's. it's still on here as $50,000, I know that the investigation into Paul Sebastian's actions is incomplete, so I am, I, I will continue to express concern about that. I also continue to not only be a leader of, but be the founder of and the leader of a national anti-racism program, so I think we can do both around here.
Thank you, is there any further discussion?
I just have one question, and maybe either Supervisor Syed or Janet can possibly give us an update on where we are as far as unreserved fund balance used as of this date and possibly a projection into the end of, end of the, I know what we had in the budget, but also there's been other things with COVID and PPE and those kinds of things, so if you can get at least some kind of an idea, I'd appreciate that.
That's a great question Bill, because I know we were expecting that starting last month, and then we were hoping to have it this month.
Yes, yes, and thank you for inquiring, I'm hoping to get that done by tomorrow, and again, I thank you all for your patience, it's been an incredibly busy past few weeks, but that, again, it should be done by tomorrow, there's just a few more pieces into the production that we had to work in. So, that's pending, but soon to come.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion? Okay, saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-Jesh 209 sponsored by Supervisor Syed, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing and directing the supervisor to execute documents necessary to opt into New York State Paid Family Leave for town employees.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm sure that we have a disclaimer statement that's going to be right into the record, so I will turn that over to Alexis Kim at this time.
Yes, hello, in so much as I assisted with drafting this resolution, I have a mandatory obligation pursuant to Chapter 17, Section 4, Subparagraph L of the Town Code, to publicly disclose on the official record that I have an indirect financial interest in this resolution and that I will likely benefit from, from this benefit if the town does opt into the New York State Paid Family Leave.
Okay, thank you, is there any discussion? You say none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-210 sponsored by Councilman McPartlin, will the clerk please read?
A ceremonial resolution recognizing and honoring retired Deputy Chief John R. Waterfield.
Thank you, I will second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I just want to share with the board that I was having a discussion with Deputy Chief today, he spoke with Robert Waterfield, who's the son of John Waterfield, in the past few days, now he indicated to him that this really meant a lot to himself and his family, so I want to thank the board for doing that, and we'll be obviously having the official document in each other's mailboxes to sign and then send it back to the family, so I just wanted to pass that along to anyone.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-211 sponsored by Supervisor Syed, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute an electricity supply agreement with Constellation New Energy Incorporated.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-212 sponsored by Supervisor Syed, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a person to the Board of Assessment Review.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say a word about Linda Rizzo, we ran against each other the first time I ran, I think she has spent every month since then getting up until the COVID crisis encouraging me and perhaps providing some critiques of me, but I believe that Linda Rizzo, with every fiber of being, loves this town, wants to make it as good as it could possibly be, she speaks her mind, and from everything I know about the Board of Assessment Review, she is an outstanding member of the Board of Assessment Review, she is a champion of the taxpayers of this town, and she believes every single penny of these taxpayer dollars should be protected and cared for to the utmost, and I very much appreciate Linda's willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you, sir.
And all of that said, she'll still get up next month and have something to say about me, but I appreciate that, because I know she just wants to make us all better.
Thank you, is there any further discussion?
It is good to have concerned citizens, it really is, it makes us all better, thank you Linda, thank you Denise.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-213 sponsored by Supervisor Syed, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a retainer agreement with an outside counsel.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
I'm sad to see that we have a second outside counsel-retainer agreement on the agenda in Ismael months, but I'm pleased that we have Gervin and Filazzo, they certainly know municipal law and working with towns and counties all over the state, I know we are in good hands.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion?
I also want to thank Paul Briggs for securing this outside counsel, for negotiating a very reasonable hourly rate from them, and for all the work that he has put into pulling together the documents that are needed and everything that Gervin Filazzo will work from moving forward.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-214 sponsored by Supervisor Syed, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a person to the Ethics Board.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
I do not know Dr. Centilli, I've never met him, I only know what I have learned about him and his background from two people that I appreciate and respect, Alexis Kim and Paul Briggs, and they were very impressed with the credentials that he could bring to this position, and I am very grateful to him for his willingness to serve, it's an important position in our community.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Thank you, and yeah.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-215 sponsored by Supervisor Syed and Councilwoman McGraw, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a town comptroller.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Well, unlike Dr. Centilli, I do know Ismael Alum, I've known her for years, I've worked with her in other capacities, I helped recruit her to this position, I am very proud of that, I believe that she will serve us very, very well, for those of you who do not know her, she has more than 30 years' experience in exactly this kind of position, she has been a comptroller and a CFO and in other municipalities in our community, most notably the city of Schenectady for years, which the former mayor of the city of Schenectady probably called weekly to ask what was going on and to say how much he believed that Ismael could make our community better, she has worked at the city of Albany and Mayor Kathy Sheehan has the same kind of things to say about her, Brian Stratton, Gary McCarthy, everyone who has worked with her really just says the best things about her, Philip Morris of Proctors, what she was able to do there, she is a woman who comes in to a municipality or an organization, and she makes it better, and I think everybody who has worked with her will say that, and so she's going to have her work cut out for her here, we're a place who is, our comptroller's office was run by the same person for 32 years, more than 25, and had a certain way of doing things, I think Ismael will do things differently, but she will do them to that same very high caliber and that same attention to detail on behalf of the taxpayers, she never forgets who she works for each and every day, that was always the impression that I've gotten from her, and she's just, she's a stellar person, but I really want to say that we had 57 people who applied for the position, we narrowed it down to five, there were folks from within this community, from other communities, I couldn't have been more impressed with the five people that we sat down with and talked to, some of whom I've, I've known for years, and would, I would have been happy with any of the five of them, they're just really outstanding candidates, and every one of them said something about why they wanted to work in our town, I mean, one person lived here and they really wanted to be able to do that, was because of how well the town has been run over the years and everything that they knew about our community, so it really says a lot, folks were not, well, they were a little bit scared off by, by the headlines recently, but people knew how well this town was run, and they knew that they could make a solid contribution here, so I, I want to thank all five people who came in and talked to us, I want to thank my colleagues for each picking five people who are really outstanding, but most of all, I want to thank Ismael for being willing to kind of come out of semi-retirement and, and take on a position that I, I think is well-suited for her, and she is very well-suited for. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you very much, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to echo some of those sentiments, of course, so welcome Ismael to Niskuna, we look forward to working with you, we have wonderful, wonderful people who work for the town, and we know you'll be a great addition to that, also thank you to all those who showed interest in, in working for us, we really appreciate that, so again, thank you and welcome Ismael.
Thank you, is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to also welcome Ismael to the town in Niskuna and echo some of Councilwoman McGraw's comments, the procedure was, you know, quite exhausting, we had many applicants, as Councilwoman McGraw said, that got widowed down to 10 and then down to five, and I want to thank all my fellow board members for participating in this, we had, and you can see on the approval of minutes, many special emergency meetings, that was all to conduct interviews for these applicants, and all of us participating in that, some personally, some virtually, when we can make it, everyone was involved in this, so this selection was done by every member of the board, and that's the way it works best, and all the applicants, I want to thank them for their words they said about Niskuna, many of them, you know, as Denise said, wanted to come here, wanted to work here because of all the good things the town of Niskuna provides, and obviously, we came to the top candidate and got the position, so we welcome her and good things ahead, thank you.
Thank you, is there any further discussion?
I want to thank Ms. McGraw for bringing her to our attention, she's a wonderful, and she's going to be a wonderful candidate, thank you.
Thank you John, well, I will round out the comments, finally, you all couldn't have said it better, and we do want to thank Ismael, we want to welcome her on board, we're all very excited to work with her, I have every confidence that she's going to do a fantastic job with her fantastic team that she's now going to be inheriting, and I want to especially thank the town board members who came together and worked together in a way that was truly wonderful, and we all almost unanimously had the same pick, so that was very neat to see, so again, thank you to the board members, thank you to all the candidates who spent their time here at town, sat through interviews, asked through a lot of questions, answered them fantastically, said so many wonderful things about our town, so again, thank the town board members, and I thank all of our candidates and welcome Ismael. But with that said, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado. Councilman Delarado. Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Council, Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-216 sponsored by Councilwoman Jaquith, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a one-cargo van for use for the town maintenance and grounds employee.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
He's on mute.
Might be back now, call him again.
We're trying, Councilman Delarado. He's muted, I'll go on, Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
John, I'll be yourself.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Councilman Delarado. Councilman Delarado, you're on mute.
Press star six.
Thank you. Oh, there. Councilman Delarado.
Thank you, and yeah.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-217 sponsored by Councilwoman Jaquith, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the sale of certain surplus highway and parks, parks equipment through public auction.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-218 sponsored by Councilwoman Jaquith, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a license agreement with Firestorm for use of soccer fields at Zenor Park.
Thank you, do I have a second? Double second? Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado. Councilwoman Jaquith. Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Jaquith.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-219, sponsored by Councilwoman Jaketh. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a temporary seasonal grounds worker.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-220, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a driveway agreement with the present owners of 2516 Hilltop Road.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-221, sponsored by Councilman Delarado and Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 220 entitled zoning of the code of the town in Niskiuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
I, I, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-222, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appoint, approving the first quarter 2020 corporate utility billing reconciliation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
This resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-223, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the second quarter 2020 corporate utility billing warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-224, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing payment to National Grid.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
This resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-225, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing payment to the current owner of 1013 Winnie Road for cost incurred in connection with the Winnie Road Route 7 water main replacement project.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank our staff. There were three or four very high-level staff members involved in this one resolution, attempting to come up with a, um, a, a solid and fair resolution to an issue that was quite complicated for, for our residents. And I just want to thank Alexis Kim, Matt Yedo, as always. I know his team, Josh was involved in this as well, and Janet Nguyen from our finance office. Um, all, all were involved in this issue and I know it went on for a while, but I want to thank all of them ensuring that we got a fair resolution for everyone.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-226, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a portable sewer pump for use by the water and sewer department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-227, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a flat-top equipment trailer for use by the water and sewer department.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-228, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing town maintenance workers in the water and sewer department.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-229, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing three water and sewer maintenance workers in the water and sewer department.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-230, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a plant operator in the water and sewer department.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarado.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jaketh.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Last resolution, 2020-231, sponsored by Councilwoman Jaketh. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing town pool staff.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion?